Yeah, thank you at work. Thank you so much for your help.
Welcome.
And patience. Yes, my name is Landa Masdea Brunero. I was born and raised in Columbus, been here my entire life. I have went to Bishop Hartley High School, an interior designer in Columbus for 40 years, a bandleader's daughter, a baker's daughter. We had a bakery here in Columbus, Ohio, Seymour Bakery, Cianantonio's Pastry Shop. So the history of my family and my family in the Italian community is very prevalent and very strong. Some of you may know that my grandfather and my father were the ones that helped to put up the Columbus statue. So of course it's very near and dear to me personally, but on a cultural Italian level and a representative of the city of Columbus. So we cherish that statue and what it means at different levels. Understand that. And we wanted to make sure that whatever happens to it, that the Italian community is involved. I'm representing the Piave Club. I am also a very, very involved owner of the Valleydale Ballroom. Columbus and her landmarks as the Valleydale are very dear to me. So that's the main reason that I am here. Again, as the Italian, as an interior designer, just wanted to make sure that aesthetically, it's in a beautiful space. I have several ideas. We'll get to it at some point. But that is the main reason I am here. Also a member of the Italian Sons and Daughters of America. Any other questions for me? I hear, I see mouths, but I don't hear anything. I'm so sorry.
Trying to tell me I'm.
Very impressive.
Very impressive. Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm involved with the Columbus Italian Festival. How could I forget that? It's my life. So I'm on the board as a director for many, many years, chairperson for four years, involved with the festival competition that will be brought to Columbus. So all of it. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Excited to be here.
Welcome. Is Patrice Cochi here?
No.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eliza Ho. I have been serving the CAC Columbus Arts Council since 2018. So I'm still pretty new to the Columbus arts, no scene. But I have been living in Columbus for 20 years now. I'm originally from Hong Kong. Both my husband and I, we were born and raised in Hong Kong. And I came to Columbus because of OSU. I came here for graduate studies in the history of art. And I got my graduate degrees back in 2005. And I worked at the Wexler Center before I started my business with my husband, who is an architect. So we both own a business here called Tim Line Architect. And we have been designing a lot of restaurants and, you know, houses and other projects in here. The thing that I'm most interested in, especially for the Columbus statue, is truly, you know, this is one of the first things when I came to Columbus, you know, you know, the first thing that I saw as a public art and, you know, 20 years ago. And it has a special meaning to me, even though I didn't know much about the history of the statue, you know, how it came about, and even the history of, you know, Christopher Columbus. But, you know, throughout the years, you know, I get to know a lot more. And I'm always interested in public art. And on the side, I also work for Adam H., you know, Alcohol, Drugs and Mental Health of Franklin County on their Public Arts Program. I have been working with community members creating public arts mural since 2013. So we have been creating public arts murals for, you know, for seven, eight years now and, you know, in different communities. I'm always interested in how the community being involved in, you know, the public space. So yeah, that's pretty much it. So I hope to learn more from every one of you here and truly to expand my, you know, cultural understanding of Columbus.
Great to have you, Eliza. Thank you for participating. Marianne Vanderheiden.
Yes, and I'm, I'm very happy to be here as well. And my story in some ways parallels Eliza's. So I too serve on the Columbus Art Commission. I'm an even newer member. I joined right before pandemic. Or at least so it feels. It's been a blur year for sure. And so I work for the Ohio State University. I currently run Urban Art Space, which is in downtown Columbus. I've been affiliated with Urban Art Space since 2013, initially as a curator, exhibitions person, and more recently as the director. I've been in Columbus often on really since 1995. I grew up in the Netherlands. So born and raised there and then eventually made it down to Columbus for graduate school, like Eliza did. My degree is in art, in studio art. And I had a brief stint at the University of Florida where I was a faculty member teaching video and performance arts and some public art as well. So I have some track record in that. As far as the, my interest goes, I'm really interested in kind of historical context and narratives around that. So storytelling, how can we, you know, really begin to or continue to tell, you know, the stories that are most important to us and that collectively shapes our lives? So just a bit of context, I live in old North Columbus. I see Doreen here. Doreen sometimes gives tours of my neighborhood and I love, or at least pre-pandemic, I saw you walking by. And I just kind of love knowing more, you know, it's like, so I live in an old house, but beyond that, like what can one know about it? And so I think it's, you know, it's the stories, it's the context, it's what we can understand, you know, how, how was our history shaped? What did our neighborhood look like? What, you know, how did we get to where we are? All those bits and pieces. So as a background and as educational moments, I'm very interested in those pieces. So I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
Happy to be here too. Thank you. Daniel Montour, welcome.
Zego, can you hear me okay? Great, great. I'm Dan Montour, Gangeng Gera, or as you may call it, they know it as Mohawk. Member of the Gondalaga Band of Mohawks. And I'm super, I'm very honored to be here. Not only as an Indigenous person, but as an intercultural program specialist with the Office of International Affairs at Ohio State University. So I design a lot of intercultural programs for international domestic students and also how to develop intercultural communication competencies, like how we talk about culture and how we understand culture between, you know, parts and parts of the world. I'm also a performer here in Columbus, longtime resident in Columbus, Ohio. Most importantly, a father who wishes to raise his daughter to celebrate both her Native and Italian heritage. My wife is Italian-American, so I want to see both these heritages undiminished and celebrated to build a better vision and more inclusive idea of Columbus. And, you know, this, for me, I've been protesting this statue for a very long time with many others. This is for Indigenous people, it's a symbol of, you know, many things. A lot of, you know, genocide, white supremacy, the first slave ships. A lot of horrifying images come to mind when this statue is seen. And also it signifies a lot of our society's, you know, allowance and acceptance of these things that happen and normalizes violence. So to see that, to see Black Lives Matter, you know, also recognize the violence of this image and the violence of these symbols and the, with the intersectionality was also really powerful. So I think that, you know, that context also needs to be aware of it. In 2020, we realized that we were looking at Columbus in new eyes and how we want to envision what this city really means. And I, yeah, there's so much to talk about with this issue. And I think including more and more voices is paramount as well. This is a space where we can like, you know, for reconciliation and progress to be had, including a lot more voices from a lot of stakeholders. It's going to be important to peel this, you know. No matter what we do with the statue, you know, it's important that we recognize what story we are telling, you know. Is this a city that has the strength to face systemic racism? Is this a city that has the strength to, you know, move forward with bigger ideas? And also while honoring and celebrating our Italian-American heritage and connections with Genoa. So thank you so much for your time. And also, we would be remiss if I didn't do a quick land acknowledgement. Now, this Columbus lands ancestral, contemporary lands, the Shawnee, Potawatomi, Delaware, Mi'ami, Peoria, Seneca, Wyandotte, Ajibwe and Cherokee peoples. So it's, we'd be really lost if we didn't give a shout out to all the wonderful people that have been and are here with us in so many ways. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's great to hear from you and I love hearing everyone's perspective. It's perfect. I'll skip to the last. Kimber, would you mind sharing some of your story?
Good morning, Madam Chairman. It's nice to be with all of you. My name's Kimber Perfect. And I am, I was appointed, asked to join by Lori when I was working for Mayor Ginther. I just retired on Friday from the Ginther administration and from my, my work life. This is my new work life. But I told Mayor Ginther, I still wanted to serve on this committee. And he of course said, absolutely, please, please do. So I'm really honored to be joining all of you in this important work. I, I really feel this is, I feel the weight of what we, what we are about to undertake with our work together. And, and so my career spanned both the private sector and the public sector. But I always say my public service always meant the most to me throughout my career. I've worked for two governors, Governor Celeste, as well as Governor Strickland, and then rounded up my, rounded out my public service in my career serving for Mayor Ginther. I also serve on the Greater Columbus Arts Council Board with Jamie, I see Jamie Goldstein on here. And was the mayor's liaison to the arts and really enjoyed that activity. And serving on the GCAC Board with Councilwoman Tyson, who's with us this morning, was an honor as well. And I continue to serve on that board. I'm also a proud Italian-American. My grandfather Severio Ricci came from Inta Dacqua in the Ibruti region in 1903. And while I did not know him, he died before me. I've always been proud of my Italian heritage. And I am 50% Italian and have always identified with my Italian heritage. But I'm really, I'm really glad we're, we're taking these steps to really look at the true history of Columbus and the man, Christopher Columbus, and ensure that the stories we tell really should represent our true history. I worked with Mayor Ginther over the last five plus years on a host of initiatives critically important, including this last year, I had a number of really critical assignments connected to COVID-19. And I told him, you know, that, that also was an honor to round out my career working to keep our community safe and healthy. But one initiative I worked on with him every year was his inductees into the Columbus Hall of Fame. Our very own committee member Cathy Rancier was an inductee, I believe it was three years ago. And as I watched him each year carefully select those five, six individuals, both living and, and dead, he was so thoughtful about ensuring that our Columbus Hall of Fame represented our city, our city's history, our city today. That, and if you look at his classes the last five years, and not that there wasn't diversity before, because certainly previous mayors had inducted many wonderful men and women from across the spectrum. But you will see, you know, people like Helen Jenkins Davis, who was a Columbus City School teacher for 30 years, a black woman who after 30 years realized she'd only taught black children. She was the lead plaintiff in the, in the work to desegregate our schools. She was the first to testify before Judge Duncan. You have people like Ms. Ann Walker, who was inducted this year. She's 97, even though she tells everybody she's 79. And by golly, because she flips the numbers and she so can get away with 79. But she was the first woman and first black to cover the Ohio State House and the first woman to cover City Hall. She remembers another fellow inductee, Golda Mae Edmundston, a white woman who was the first woman who was president of Columbus City Council. And she actually covered her as a reporter. And believe me, Golda Mae's been gone for several decades. But she remembered this woman. So and what I'm trying to say is this work is important to our mayor that, that we're doing. And he really appreciates you and what you're committing to do here. And so, yeah, that's me.
It's you. Thank you so much. And congratulations on retirement. Great.
It can be tricky for a person of a certain age. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to go back, back, back a few years for a perspective. I grew up in Huntington, West Virginia, about an hour and 15 minutes due south of Columbus. And when I was a kid, it was segregated. And, and my, of course, memories of that are, are really pretty bad. It kind of comes down to the fact that I don't think I had eye contact with a white adult without some sense of trepidation until I was, until probably I left and went away to college to some extent. But what, the reason I share that is that one of the bright spots we had every summer was coming to Columbus. My, the moms would bake cookies and cakes and sell all kinds of stuff and they charter a bus. And there was only about 3,000 black people and we pretty much lived in one area. But chartered a bus and we came up to Columbus. Came up and we would go to Lazarus and we'd go to the zoo and we went to the amusement park. And the sense of freedom that that gave, that, you know, just walking around and looking at people and looking at, you know, no sense of boundaries was just amazing. And, and in addition to that, I can recall there were a couple of movies that were notable for black folks. And we could not watch them in West Virginia and Huntington unless you were in the space designated for, for black people. And it was, it was just horrible. It was never cleaned. It was, you know, it just wasn't worth it. Plus my dad wasn't going to let us go anyway. So, and we didn't, and in addition to that, we were not allowed to go to the amusement park on colored day because he was convinced that, you know, any, lots of evils may, may happen to us. And then, so I grew up with someone with that attitude. But anyways, so, but we wanted to see those movies. So my, I was the oldest, so my mom and dad and some friends, we came up to Columbus to watch Imitation of Life. And that was, I was a teenager and that was really cool. So when I ended up going to high school on Marshall University's campus, that was an outgrowth of some discrimination that my parents recognized in the middle, in the public middle school. So I went to school on, on Marshall's campus and had the good fortune to be recruited to Western College for Women, now part of Miami of Ohio, and went back home for a short period of time, worked as a systems engineer. Again, nothing much had changed whatsoever. Decided that I wanted to work with people as opposed to, I saw it then as equipment machinery. And I applied to law schools among a lot of other subjects, including med school. But I'm so pleased I chose, law school kind of chose me with Ohio State. There was some outreach. And then my dad said that you cannot go to a better place on earth than Ohio State. I came here. It was, it was, it was great. I ended up meeting my husband. We married our third year in law school. And also part of the reason for going to law school was I wanted, that, that my, my experience, and I say this with some, some, some care and thought with white people, led me to want to be self-employed. And, and I share that a lot because a lot of people will assume that we, Fred and I started our law firm because there were not other choices. Well, there weren't, but by the same token, it was something that we considered very carefully. And we're very pleased that for 26 and a half years, we had our practice of Rancier and Rancier that was Intermin Village and so on. So I, as far as my professional, professional activities, we ended up sort of supporting those with a lot of community outreach. That's why I know a number of you, you know, Diane, Kimber, Priscilla, so on and so forth. And, and so among those opportunities was meeting Ray Hanley in a circumstance where I was, I was supposed to be actually judging him. And out of that, he appointed me to GCAC and I ended up chairing downtown special events. And then I, next year I was chair of that board for a few years. And just grew, you know, really grew with regard to my relationship to Columbus, was appointed to boards by three mayors. Gret Kraschka appointed me to the airport board. I was there for 20 years. You know, just a wonderful experience at three, three children. And then in the course of things, even Fred's moms, my mom and Fred's mom moved here. So we were three generations now, four generations in Columbus. I've got, all my grandchildren are here as well. And when I was, had the honor of being inducted into the Hall of Fame, what really came to mind that I wanted to share was that, that my sons came back. They, they swore from the time they were about, you know, 10, eight and 10 years old, Mom, Dad, when we got, when we leave, we are not coming back to Columbus. And actually that struck me in many ways. I ended up sharing it in a, in a few circumstances where I would get an opportunity, which was rare for a lot of people. But I had an opportunity to express some concerns and I, I just said, Columbus, do something so my, my African-American male sons will want to come back and enjoy this city because there's not a lot socially and culturally for them to do. And, and how about basketball? But anyway. So, but, but I, again, it's, I'm honored to be part of this. I feel, I live across from Franklin Park on the Near East Side. Another very conscious decision to be part, to stay part of the city. Fred was briefly on city council, as some of you may know. And so, you know, I have a, I have a lot of affection for Columbus, but I also have a lot of, I have, especially since last summer, some fears. I, my granddaughters took me to task that I did not realize the, that Columbus was ahead of a lot of cities. It's not ahead of all with regard to deaths of black males at the hands of policemen. I did not know that. I have since, you know, tried to educate myself or see, see things a lot more through their eyes. And, and that even brings me more, more interest in being part of this. I, I, I hear what, what's being said and I, and I see that our challenge is, is vast. But I also think that this is, this is really a great thing we're doing. And I, I really like the fact that our mayor and, and the rest of you are, that, you know, we're coming together to give this a lot of thought and consideration. So I'm, I'm really pleased to be selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I may, at some point I'm going to bring up the fact that I believe Cathy was in charge of the moving of breaststrokes in flight at the airport?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to call you on that. All right. Thank you very much. Let's see. James Sisto, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Since you brought up breaststrokes in flight, I'll have to admit my first public service was in 1984 for Mayor Dana Buck Reinhardt, where I started Columbus's first initial international economic development program called the International Trade Development Office, which was to help Columbus area companies export and to encourage investment into Columbus from foreign nations. So my career, well, let's start personal. I'm not from Ohio. I'm from New Jersey, from the ethnically and racially integrated suburb of Newark, New Jersey, where I grew up in an Italian neighborhood. And there was the Irish neighborhood and there was the Jewish neighborhood and there was the black neighborhood and we all got together at the community center and played basketball. And I came to Ohio in the 70s to go to college. I met and married a local woman and we've been together for over 40 years. I consider Columbus my home. Have enjoyed living here ever since. After my period with, with Dana Buck Reinhardt for a few years, I went into law practice. I practiced primarily in the international arena with several different law firms. I've practiced in the economic development area, trying to grow central Ohio and Ohio in general. I've worked for three governors, Kimberly, because I got the nine days of Nancy Hollister. I was the state's international trade director for Governor George Voinovich when we had 11 offices around the world, about 60 people. And we encouraged investment in Ohio and trade out of Ohio. I also then worked for Nancy for her short tenure as Ohio's only female governor. So I can, I can keep that as a claim of fame. And then for a few years for governor task before returning back into law practice. I've also been a small business executive. But most importantly, I'm here as a representative of the approximately 400 strong members of the Columbus International, Columbus Italian Club. We're located in Grandview. We have a long and proud history. We have a membership of Italian gentlemen who take their heritage very seriously and who have very strong opinions in many different directions, not all in the same direction, many different directions about this issue. And I myself am a third generation Italian. I have, six of my eight great grandparents came to the United States from Italy, primarily from the Compania region. They came in the late 1800s and early 1900s. I would still have relatives in Italy, primarily in the Naples area. When they came to the United States, it was about that same period of time when President Benjamin Harrison declared the first official Columbus Day. And he declared that in response to the horrible, horrible period of our history where Italians were subject to racism and bigotry and were not accepted in the United States. And 11 Italians were lynched in New Orleans, the largest mass lynching in US history. And they were lynched for a crime they were acquitted of. But nonetheless, a mob decided to lynch them. So Benjamin Harrison then declared Columbus Day to try to acknowledge the contribution of Italian-Americans to American heritage. And it's a very, very important piece of, you know, I guess I don't really connect with Christopher Columbus as, as much as I connect with the symbol of what he represents to the Italian-American community. And that was our own fight to get out of what was considered systemic racism, although probably not labeled that at the time. We were considered others in the immigration. Check the, check the box. So it's been an important journey for me to prepare to serve on this committee. I've done a lot of talking with family and friends. I've done a lot of talking with family and friends and and I have no preconceived notions of where it ends, believe me. But I do, uh, take very seriously the honor that, uh, the, the club bestowed on me to represent them here in this, in this process. I am, as I said, currently a practicing attorney. I'm chief legal officer for the law offices of Robert Sher. We, uh, we are here in Columbus on the north side. And, um, I look forward to serving with everybody on this committee.
Wonderful story. Thank you. Um, Jamie, hi. Jamie Staley.
Good morning. Um, my name's Jamie Staley. I'm the executive director of Greater Columbus Sister Cities International. And so I have the unique honor of managing or helping to manage our relationships with our ten sister cities around the world, one of which is Genoa, Italy. It's a very special, uh, relationship. It was the first sister city I visited. In my capacity as executive director and was honored to travel, uh, to that city, um, with council member Tyson on, on a delegation. A little bit about, um, sister cities and, and what we try to do, we, our mission is to build community relationships around the world. Through a variety of areas of focus, including education, economic development, arts and culture. In real time, that may mean something different to a lot of the folks on this committee. I know we've worked with the Italian festival to bring the pesto championship here to Columbus. The Paganini violin was a project of, of Greater Columbus Sister Cities, but we do a lot of economic development and connecting folks that are looking to do business here with, uh, like-minded partners or vice versa. And so, this, this process and being involved in having a conversation about not only the fact that this was a gift that was, that was given at the beginning of our sister city relationship with Genoa. And what that meant to our partners in Genoa at that point in time, but also what it means now. For all of us, relationships evolve and grow. And part of what this moment is about is, is certainly focused on a statue, but I don't want to lose the relationship that we have. That's been so, such an enhancement to the people of our city. And so I look forward to having conversations with all of you about, um, the varying, uh, levels of interest in this particular project. But more than, more than anything else, I'm, I'm grateful that we're having an open conversation about this relationship and what it means to our city.
Excellent. Thank you. Doreen Yousour, would you speak to? Thank you. Welcome. I froze for a second. I, I think you're muted.
I did. I'm sorry. Am I on? All right. Uh, I'm really taken back by the stories. I am truly taken back. When I was asked about being on the committee, I was honored. I am halfway through listening introductions. And I am absolutely floored. I'm wondering why I'm here and what I can bring to this. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this very much as the rest of you are. Since, uh, some of you may associate me with Columbus Landmarks Foundation, which has been a, a lifelong love of mine for probably about forty years. So I started as a volunteer and became a president at some point, and I've chaired every committee of it. And they somehow can't get rid of me. I'm still, you know, in the door. I do a lot of education programs for them, including the walking tours and other things. Uh, I am a historian. Uh, one of those boring people who can actually tell you why Columbus is named Columbus, um, with, given enough time there. My background, however, has been for thirty-eight years, really, uh, as a classroom teacher in Columbus schools. At Indianola Junior High and then Fort Hayes, when it opened as a high school, which, so I've only spent decades in two places. But what it has been is that, um, as a teacher in Columbus, married to the teacher in Columbus, what you learn to do is you learn to trust the stories you hear from students who are also telling you the stories of their parents and telling you the stories of their grandparents. If we are lucky, and in my case, that's not necessarily true in my own family, you have three generations. And out of that, not only come the stories, but in some cases, the stories of injustice and where it starts before that is much harder to get at. You know what happened in that fourth generation back and that fifth generation back? So, uh, sometimes we don't figure this out until we're kind of adults, I guess. And we are, um, in my own particular case, I guess it's important that I'm going to mention something that I normally don't share with people. And that is, uh, that I, I grew up in Cleveland. That part I do share occasionally. But it was a very strange kind of thing when I look back as a child and, and moving into adulthood. Uh, my parents were very, um, convoluted about racial relations. I'll put it that way. My father had come to Cleveland as a young man in his twenties, probably just as the immigration door was closing from Prussia. His father was here already. And, uh, then another brother would come in and then the door shut. So my father grew up in Cleveland, actually thinking that the one thing he always wanted to do in his life was to actually meet Native Americans because the largest, um, translated book in Germany, in German at the time, was Last of the Mohicans. And it is in fact, the reason we have a street named Mohawk. In most German communities, there is an allegiance behind how Germans who didn't have a country saw Native Americans as also disenfranchised and had a great deal of respect for them. My father unfortunately never met a Native American, but he was somewhat satisfied by the fact that Cleveland had a baseball team named the Indians, I guess. Uh, my mother was Hungarian, but she came out of, and this is where the Columbus connection is very interesting. There is so much of a white and black Appalachian influence in the culture of Columbus. And it starts really with three Appalachian migration waves, not even including the African-American migration, which is also sort of moving through, that we fail to sometimes acknowledge what those cultural pieces are in terms of deep culture. Uh, which I guess is my way of thinking about my mother's own background and upbringing was, um, to think in being in a coal mining community, that, uh, African-Americans would be the potential strike breakers always. It's the same mentality that grew up in South Parsons on Reben Hossak, near Buckeye Steel, who, because these people were the only ones who had a house given to them by Buckeye Steel. No one had to talk about it. Nobody had to mention it. It was just simply you always knew who would go in during a strike and who wouldn't. And so my mother's fears would have really probably led her much more to being, um, nervous about differences of people if they were not white. My father, on the other hand, worked on the east side of Cleveland. We grew up on the west side. And, um, he always worked within the black community. And for him, it was, um, his trying to understand why he felt so differently about Polish people who he had always been taught were not worthy of their country because they had given it up twice in history already. And he remembered an incident of meeting a man from Poland who struck out his hand to shake my father's hand. And my father would have never done this, inadvertently pulled his hand back. He could not, he could not for a minute touch the man. He was puzzling this out. And then, then he apologized profusely because he realized in that moment that he was meeting another human who had a complex history of national and local politics and international. In no way was that man responsible for whatever my father had been taught at a younger age. So my father, I often say, and was a member of the NAACP, was very close to the people that he was with twelve hours a day. And my mother wasn't. She was, uh, uh, on the other side of town and, um, and a completely different circumstances, only remembering incidences for her childhood. I have no doubt that had my mother stayed in some of these communities and someone, um, would have approached her about sewing robes for the Klan, she would have. And I, I don't mean that as any sort of joke. But if you've ever read one of the only studies ever done about women's role in the Klan in Indiana, you can start to understand the role of women, uh, being used by men in some cases. And perhaps we've even seen that in our own political country situation in the last year or so. So when, uh, my father, um, was, my mother had passed away when I was thirty, my father remarried. Uh, he didn't want to leave Cleveland. He didn't want to come here. And he, uh, uh, married a young woman. He went, married a young African-American woman. My father is sort of a legend here. He was sixty-eight, married a twenty-seven-year-old woman. I was thirty. That's my stepmom. And, uh, she had two boys and then they went on to have three children of their own. And one, so I have a sister in Cleveland and I have, I do have siblings. What's interesting is that, um, it was the, kind of the strangest May-December wedding, I guess. But, uh, it worked in a lot of ways for them because, uh, my father even adopted her, uh, two boys. Uh, because they had not known their fathers. She had the children at a very early age. And so for my father, it was, um, a way of, I want to say, he acted on his own love. But it was a way of also making up for what he had seen in years on the east side of Cleveland. Which was, uh, uh, and I would go down in the summers and help my dad as a kid. So I kind of knew this. My father would let me run wild in the neighborhood because, uh, and play with the kids because he knew that comes the end of the day, he could say to his customers, anybody see a little white girl running around here? Because that's my daughter. We gotta go home. And if had my mother even known that, she would have been apoplectic. But my father also knew that a lot of the children in the market were the, uh, sons and daughters of his partners who were married, who had other families. And they were never acknowledged. And my father always had this in his head that if he fell in love with someone else, despite what society said, he would marry them. And I think that added to my Columbus Public School experience in the sense that, um, you do take the stories of where people are with their hopes, dreams and prejudices. And you try to put it into what someone else mentioned, uh, is historic context. You try to figure out where this is all going. So in my thirty-eight years of Columbus schools, I still have an office at Fort Hayes and I work a little undercover, not paid by anybody. I have directed teaching American history grants and worked with the Annenberg Foundation and civic education. In fact, Shannon Hart was one of the students who came up by way of that program in Columbus schools to have a real interest in public service along with other, other students that are now at that point in our lives, making a difference in Columbus in a very positive and good way. But one of the things that I've worked with, with students and my former student teacher there was, uh, projects in Milo Grogan. And Milo Grogan is a classic example of what we should all be thinking about a little bit more too. And I hear it in pieces is the migration and immigration patterns that have influenced Columbus and Columbus thought. Uh, and, and yes, politically, we probably are a wonderfully little bright patch of blue and a sea of red. But Milo Grog is an example of, uh, a very common, uh, migration pattern. It is Irish, Italian and African-American. And I, I'm absolutely floored that somebody else brought up, uh, the lynching of Italians in, uh, in New Orleans. Uh, it's not exactly a well-known story. And it's also a racial divide, racial in the sense ethnic divide is a better word between the early Italians into Columbus that were mostly northern and southern Italians who came in later. And then you have to peel back and you have to look at what immigration law was doing. So it's kind of ironic for me that there is, and, but I understand it, that there was this sudden direction toward that Christopher Columbus statue. When all you have to do is to look at the Leveque Tower and on the thirteenth floor there are the races of mankind as, 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 um, conceived of in the nineteen twenties when that building was built. And they sit there, the races of mankind in thirteen or fourteen little boxes. You know, in other words, our ethnic backgrounds all have to be a box. You are this, you are this, you are this, you are this. There is no blending. We never think of continuums. We never think of it this way. The nineteen twenties were from eighteen ninety, uh, eighteen nineties to nineteen twenties. And the Woodrow Wilson administration were probably the most segregated period of time in American history. And also the most racist. Um, and so I'm going to now put my other kind of hat on it that, I did chair the social studies committee for the, um, state of Ohio. The, uh, the people who were sort of the, um, institutional people, like various history organizations and universities. And then the other part, which were teachers and parents. And it was an eye-opener. It was truly an eye-opener because on two levels, and I'll try to wrap this up kind of quickly. But the two levels were, um, one was the amount of parent con, uh, of, uh, of comments that came in, and they came in mostly from northwestern Ohio. And they were saying things like, we don't understand the social studies standards because they are, uh, they, it says in the social studies standards that first graders and kindergarten kids should start to learn about cultural diversity. We have no cultural diversity. We are very white. We don't, uh, have other people in this part of the world. It was like, really? You don't turn on a television? You don't, you don't really look behind to see who's cooking when you go to a Mexican restaurant because northwest Ohio is a lot of them. It was like, are you people living in the real world? You know, it was, put, put their heels down and be entrenched about cultural diversity. On the other hand, if you look at the social studies standards, the period of time which interests me the most, and I've worked with the kids at Fort Hayes on this as we, uh, did a WOSU piece, because I'm a consultant with them, about what they were learning was that the, um, social studies standards are truncated so that the last part of the eighth grade year is reconstruction. And the teachers who get the kids in ninth grade, uh, come to realize that the eighth grade teachers ran out of time. They've never talked about reconstruction. This is a universal. This is not Columbus schools. This is everybody in Ohio. And, um, and so they try to do a quick catch-up and then they move on, but we've never really resolved reconstruction in so many ways. And I think we, as adults, looking back can all see that. The second thing is, is that, um, in working with younger students, fourth grade is the only level of the social studies standards where things about community are mentioned. And so when a teacher from Clinton Elementary in Clintonville, the other last, just before the pandemic, asked me about teaching about, uh, culture, and we were talking, she was a young African-American teacher. I suggested that we bring in, um, Ashelanda Robinson, who wrote, um, Is There Magic in the Blackberry Patch? Because she knew about this, but she wanted to take a tour. And I said, well, there's really nothing to see except new housing. Uh, you know, if you want to get back into it, uh, why don't we, and I arranged to have lots of copies of the book sent to them. Why don't we read the book? And then why don't we have the students plan a tea to do an author interview? And then they, they just all did everything, so much from kindergarten uh, through the, uh, lower grades and invited in Rita Smith and Ashelanda Robinson. And, uh, a lot of the women I've worked with, uh, with the African-American, um, settlement pattern that we did a report to the National Trust, the background of it. And it's not until you start to understand that settlement pattern to understand what happens, even in desegregation of Columbus schools, which were traditionally always desegregated until the Board of Education in the nineteen fifties and sixties in the Linden area started secretly changing the boundaries every year to have all-white schools on the middle school level or the high, junior high school level in the Linden area. And people who have studied this said, you could tell immediately where there would be two flashpoints in the community. And that was one in the Linden area and one in the East High for exactly the same reason. This is stuff we don't confront. So the other part of this, I just want to kind of bring in quickly, is I still work in all of these fields. Uh, I, uh, still, uh, am doing things for Ohio Historical. I do a lot about studying racial segregation patterns and housing. Uh, and really involving high school students when I can grab them in this. But also I worked for over twenty years and, um, with the Mersham Center at Ohio State, and then it went to Bowling Green with both universities. And, uh, just as the Berlin Wall was coming down. So I've worked in Hungary, Russia, Poland, Lithuania uh, and Ukraine. And, uh, a large part of that work was working with teachers and students who were learning democracy because they were post-communist countries. There was no book. Most people did not have a constitution. There was no, um, human rights declaration except by the UN Declaration of Rights because they didn't have one. And what do you do with Stalin and, uh, and Lenin and all those statues? And what do you do with Stalin and uh, and Lenin and all those statues? And the students in Warsaw and in other places came up with what might be a way that we could think about, and I'll tell you about that later if you're interested. Because that was a massive decision-making, is how do you change the icons on every part of every street from one political mindset to another. Okay, I took away too long. I talk fast, though.
Thank you. I know we're learning a lot from you. Um, Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Diane, and I'll, I'll try to be brief. So um, first of all, I'm happy to be um, on the committee. And um, I think I'm here for a number of reasons, and I'll just quickly share them. That um, um, when I first came to council, I, I was the first person to fund, to fund the uh, the Columbus Arts Commission. Even though we had a commission, they didn't have any money. I also was a council member that put funds um, that provided funds for the restoration of Christopher Columbus. And I serve on the Greater Columbus Sister Cities. Um, where um, well, I started with them, but I work closely with them. I, we have funded Greater Columbus Sister Cities because we understand the value of sister cities to this community. And so while working, while um, being able to work with Columbus Sister Cities was helped to re-energize our relationship with Genoa, Italy. And of course, Jamie just mentioned that, that is our, we've had that relationship now going into sixty-six years. And from that relationship, um, as we re-energized it, again, I think that we've had, that's why we've had the pestle competition. We work with the um, Italian Commission, you know, Paganini was here. We've had Thousand Faces. The mayor of Genoa has been here. The delegations from Genoa has been here. And so um, and, and when I think about the statue, the statue was built by Eduardo Alfari, Alfari. And so when you go to Genoa, and I've been there now three times, that, so with this relationship, which I mentioned, is our um, our oldest relationship. That um, Genoa is very, very proud of Christopher Columbus. And very proud of recognizing that, you know, with, with history um, that everything that Christopher Columbus may have, has done that is negative. There's also things that certainly are positives and that they absolutely uh, care greatly about their relationship with Christopher Columbus. And so every year they have a Christopher Columbus Festival, and we have participated in that. And we have a very strong relationship with the city of Genoa. And um, and but I mentioned that the um, we now, in our possession at the city, um, the, the um, the artists, I just mentioned. Uh, we now have, you know, the statue that he made, the small statue cast of Christopher Columbus. We have all the documentation that's from um, from the artist. Um, in terms of him preparing to um, you know, to, to make the statue. You know, all the artwork, the pictures, the history of the statue coming to the city of Columbus. And so um, uh, and the Columbus Historical Society has that information in the, even the, the statue. So um, it, I think I'm here because, well, I love art, I love public art, and so I have been very active. Um, we know Diane, you know this. So, so I'm here for that purpose. I'm also here um, uh, because I think I tried to bring, make sure that people realize how important it was and all of the public art that has come to our city based upon the commission being more active and having money. But also the statues, I mentioned, the importance of that statue from our greater sister city. As well as, as we've heard on this call, the importance of that statue certainly to um, the, the, our Italian residents in this community. So I, I, I do believe that our charge is to kind of, to hear, all, hear the different voices that um, in this community. And to kind of, and then to determine where is the best place to continue to showcase Christopher Columbus? How do we tell the history of what's happened? So, you know, I, I recognize that, as Dan mentioned earlier. Yes, Columbus and this whole country, you know, was made up of native, Native Americans. We were not here, and everyone here is an immigrant. And, and we came here different ways. So some people came here by choice. Other people, like people of my ancestry, did not come here by choice. And so that is a huge difference from my beginning, me having these conversations about racism and racism, the public health crisis. There's a difference. But again, I think that our, you know, for me, I, I, I am very concerned about what will happen to the statue because of that relationship. And they absolutely um, in Genoa are watching what we do with that statue. And they saw it as an opportunity, what about history, talk about the history of how we got here. And, you know, use it as a teaching motive for um, our, for our residents. So I am here for, to listen to, you know, for Genoa. I'm here for the certainly public art. And um, and also I guess as you begin to think about what will go in front of City Hall, so it represents you know, all the residents that live in this community that will be proud of the public art that will depict who we are, you know, as, as a community. And so I'm happy um, to be here. Thank you. And I'm born and raised in Columbus, so I'll just say that I am a Colum- I, I didn't come from anyplace else. I'm born and raised right here in Columbus with a school here. So I, I love Columbus and what it represents. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was fabulous. Um, I'm, I'm very honored to be here myself. I'll be very quick with my remarks, but I want to move us into the next section. Um, and I have no regrets that we took long uh, to really get to know each other and to understand where we uh, where we come to this, this committee and the, the work we want to do. Um, I'm from Whitehall and I um, have lived in Clintonville and the short north. And currently I'm in Old Beachwald. Um, so I've lived here all my life. I'm an art history graduate um, from OSU. Um, worked at the Ohio Arts Council for a few years. And then many years at the Greater Columbus Arts Council where I met many of you. Um, my, I, I'm actually, just to put this in, I'm recently retired from Ottervine University. My involvement with public art kind of started at O A C, but mostly at the Greater Columbus Arts Council. Um, where Mr. Sisto uh, mentioned Buck Reinhardt. Well, the first thing I had to do for the Greater Columbus Arts Council was investigate the value of brushstrokes in flight. When he um, just thought it was a generous thing to do to reciprocate the Christopher Columbus gift by giving them brushstrokes. But um, there was controversy about that. The lack of, come through the motions. So um, that was, I've been involved with public art for quite some time. Um, in two thousand and seven, Mayor Coleman generously, kindly appointed me as Chair of the Columbus Arts Commission. And I have been there ever since. I'm very privileged to be here. Um, my, my interest in, it, one of my primary interests in this uh, work we're doing is the protection and safe display of this um, statue. What I think I've heard today from you, um, there's a deep need to understand and to um, recognize and protect the relationships that we have together with Genoa. Um, our personal relationships uh, with the history of this town and uh, the history of the, what the statue has come to um, recognize, to be symbolic of. It's, there are so many different views of the symbol of this piece. And which makes um, it, it gives us a, a gravitas that um, it, it's almost hard to understand, but there are many implications to the work we're doing. And I'm, I'm very happy that this group is um, is behind us in, in make, working through this through. Um, we also seem to want to educate us all about Columbus being a welcoming place. Um, that the welcoming place that it was from, someone from Hong Kong, from the Netherlands, from Huntington, West Virginia. From Italy via N- New Jersey. Um, we want to um, make sure that we are um, respectful of all of the indigenous relationships that the, the statue seems to symbolize. Um, so with that, um, I want to again, get back to our agenda. Our goals for the meeting, for the, for the committee um, are listed on our agenda. We're certainly not going to get to those today. Uh, we always knew that we would have more than um, one, more than one meeting. Um, I'd like to just review the goals, if we may. Perhaps Lori, would you like to help us review the uh, goals to, for the committee and for this um, for this group? And um, you want to, you want to do that, Lori, or do you want me to?
Certainly, um, Chairperson Nance. Um, I guess the place to start with this is perhaps the mayor's letter. Um, Diane Nance received a letter from uh, the administration in uh, mid-June of last year regarding the Christopher Columbus statue and the um, administration's decision that um, it was, it was time to uh, remove the statue from the South Plaza of Columbus City Hall. Um, for those of you that aren't aware, I'll just give you a really brief, uh, brief primer of the Columbus Art Commission's authority. Um, it's a very narrow lane, but within that lane, there's a great deal of authority. And it is focused specifically on um, the, the approval of the design and placement of any art that's purchased or obtained by the city in any manner for any length of time. So it can be gifts, purchase. Um, uh, temporary, longer-term placement of art. The Art Commission has code authority over the design and placement of uh, those pieces. The purchases of that art, and then also um, the placement of any art uh, in, over uh, anywhere within the public right-of-way. Um, so they, they have quite a lot of authority by code for um, basically artwork that is to be acquired in any, any way by the city. Placed on any property owned or leased by the city or placed anywhere in, on, or over the public right-of-way. So despite the, the decisions being made at City Hall um, regarding uh, the need to remove the statue and, and a lot of that was predicated by concern for what was happening to, to statues, Christopher Columbus statues across the country. And uh, concern about people being hurt. Um, as well as the, the piece itself being harmed. Um, you know, they, they were looking for bringing this to the, bringing the idea of removing the statue to the Art Commission. And it was heard by the Art Commission in July, and they did recommend, uh, they did approve, approve the removal of the statue. Um, in the letter that um, the mayor sent to uh, Diane Nance on behalf, and the Art Commission through Diane Nance uh, as the Chair spoke a lot, about a lot of things. And I sent that letter out to you all yesterday, um, so you could take a look at it. Um, but reviewing what we have in the city's collection, are there any other pieces by provenance artists? Uh, content that perhaps are no longer appropriate um, in the twenty-first century or need to have some other um, dialogue um, information attached to them? Um, so a review of our existing collection, um, thinking about what a new public artwork might be um, for uh, since this, this particular piece is being removed. And so uh, you know, what might follow this on what is now the city's downtown campus? Um, looking at the city's symbols, um, the city's flag, the city's seal, um, all, all the different um, symbols and um, um, marks that the different departments are using. Making sure that those are appropriate and, and taking a look at those um, moving forward. And um, pertinent to this committee in particular is um, and I'll quote what's in the letter. Um, requesting uh, the Art Commission's assistance to determine the final disposition of the Christopher Col- of the Columbus statue, working with appropriate stakeholders. And leaving open the opportunity to display it elsewhere in proper context to help future generations better understand how the statue played into our country's ongoing and evolving conversation around race and equity and why it was ultimately removed. Um, the statue is safe and it's secure. It is in storage. Um, uh, where it was placed, when it was uh, moved from its location. Uh, so we don't have to uh, be concerned about that. Um, the goals um, that we have in the agenda, and these are um, goals that are also, I think, something that needs to be discussed within the committee. Um, looking at the physical care and maintenance of the statue, uh, Councilmember Tyson mentioned funding. Um, restoration work to the statue, uh, and that was some work that happened in twenty twelve. And um, those of you representing Italian organizations, um, you're probably aware of how bad it had gotten. Um, and there was uh, certainly interest and, and um, attention to City Hall to try and get the piece back into shape. I can say that at that point, frankly, there was no uh, maintenance schedule for any of the artwork that the city has, had in its collection. Um, the Art Commission was only seated shortly before that time. And we're now on a, a more uh, routine maintenance schedule for the artwork that we have. But um, our finance department in twenty twelve uh, entered into contact, contract with McKay Lodge. Uh, they're a conservation organization in Overland, Ohio. And um, it was just under twenty-five thousand dollars that was spent to really thoroughly cleanse the piece. Even out the colors, patentization, which is the, the surface color of the piece. Um, and to uh, hot wax it, so it has protective coating on it. We've since been um, engaging in a regular schedule of, of kind of hot waxing the piece every three years to help it maintain its protective coating and color. Um, but the piece, the, the care of the piece is important. And um, I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but it's undergone three um, extensive rest- restorations, including a big one in nineteen eighty-eight when it was actually removed. Um, it's a bronze alloy. It's not a pure bronze. Um, and so there's rust that occurs to the piece if it's not properly cared for. Um, the seams have been, um, the welding seams have, have uh, had corrective um, action to shore those up and make sure that the piece is structurally sound. And at this point, the piece is in structurally good condition. But because of the metals and um, the size of the piece, it is something that requires ongoing, ongoing care and maintenance. Um, the other goal, uh, stepping away from physical care and maintenance is disposition of the statue. Um, and important uh, within that, the Art Commission has felt is what are the site requirements that um, need to be considered for this piece in order to make sure that the piece is um, safe and secure? If um, it's something that's continued um, to be in placement with the city uh, on city property. Um, or any new location for the piece, if it's to be displayed. Um, what needs to um, what, what are those site requirements that need to be in place to make sure that that happens safely for the peace and for visitors? And um, then the next um, goal, um, criteria for discussion is context. And you've already spoken a lot about this, I think, in your, in your introductions. What's the historical criteria, educational criteria, cultural criteria that really needs to accompany this piece? To talk about all of the things that you've, you've spoken of. Um, we have something that was given to the city of Columbus and, and dedicated in nineteen fifty-five. Ten years after the end of World War Two. It was a huge undertaking for, you know, a city anywhere. Uh, including Italy during reconstruction after World War Two. Um, it was a gift between the Italian people to the American people um, that came to the that came to the city of Columbus. A representative of Eisenhower, President Eisenhower was on the site during the dedication. So there's that, that's been expressed, I think, by Mr. Sisto and Ms. Staley with regard to the sister cities aspect, and the, you know, the, the cultural gift between, between two people. There's also, I think, a much more sharper image that we have, knowledge about Christopher Columbus and his actions in the New World, and people responding to that and wanting to know that in a, I think, a clear-eyed way. But also, another important part of this is the overall immigrant experience. What is it like to immigrate to a new country, Italian Americans, Irish Americans, Somali Americans? It's an ongoing tale. That is something that we might be able to look at through the discussion of this piece and what happens next. Also, the indigenous peoples, indigenous populations, their experience as being the recipient of immigration, immigration of other folks into, into their, into their sphere, into their land. And also, just the city of Columbus. Our name is Columbus, the statue is Columbus, what does that mean? So what is, what is that kind of context? And from a historical and educational perspective, that should likely accompany this piece wherever it goes next? What's the story? What are the stories that need to, that need to be a part of that? And then any other goals and criteria that might come up during the course of this committee's conversations about this topic? So that's sort of a quick run-through of, I think, the, the goals and criteria, Chairperson Nance.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm always amazed at the new information each one of you has brought to this table. I really appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to suggest that we focus on making comments about any of the goals that we've outlined, that Lori has outlined, and to bring forth additional goals, if you have them, before we adjourn. Can I open the floor then for anyone to either comment on the goals or to bring forth additional goals and criteria?
Yeah, I think my big thing, oh, may I speak?
Yeah, just recognize your name, because I don't see your face.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Hi, Dan Montour. Yeah, one of the goals that first comes to mind is debunking a lot of the myths about Christopher Columbus, you know, the myths about his navigation skills, and the, also the, you know, the minimization of the genocide and ethnic cleansing and mass enslavement that occurred on these islands. You know, that's one of the biggest issues with this statue is the minimization of, okay, he did just, you know, find some great trade routes and such, but on a much more important scale enslaved thousands and thousands of murdered people and wave huge numbers. This is the thing that people are really angry about and upset about in many ways. And then once he destroyed these people, he brought the first African-American slaves. So when we put this, if we put this statue back up, you know, people aren't going to see the story about the symbol of the Italian immigrant experience. They're going to be seeing the story about, you know, we are sympathizing with, you know, white, this white supremacist, genocidal individual. And that, when we put that back up on the face level, we have to really realize that. So for me, one of the goals, and like the, is debunking these myths, telling the truths that actually happened, and that the people of Columbus are rejecting this figure of Columbus as a hero. We're moving away from it on the Columbus Day, we're taking it out of advertising in a lot of ways. And we don't want to, and this isn't an anti, if you want to see this as an American issue, or as an Italian-American issue. And there are many more things that can symbolize our connection with Genoa, hopefully in the new artwork that we replaced. But with this replacement and disposition, you have to be very mindful of the messages that we're sending, very mindful of the, the history that we are doing. Many people in Columbus want to see this torn down. You know, want to see this, you know, transformed even, melted down to turn something new. So it seems, I wasn't aware that everyone on the dais is so pro-Columbus on this meeting here. So the idea of simply putting it somewhere else is really, on many levels, it seems like a cosmetic, you know, answer to addressing the institutional racism that has followed Christopher Columbus and his impact on the United States and everyone here. So I really need to say that piece. And I really appreciate everyone's story, and I didn't, I know, yeah, so much the, I really appreciate the Italian-Americans here telling us the connections with this statue. And this is, you know, it's been quite eye-opening as well. And hopefully you can kind of hear more and more, as the only indigenous representative here, you know, give them some time to kind of relate what the statue means to us as well, in the greater context of the US. So goal is about, you know, the, the myth that we're kind of debunking. And the second goal I want to talk about too, which I'm really happy about and more excited about, is that, you know, what's replacing that is a lot of themes about interconnectedness. One of the great things that happened in, you know, Black Lives Matter and COVID-19 is we realized that we are more bound to one another, more than ever. With the pandemic, we realized if one person sick, gets sick, we can all get sick. If one person with BLM, we're realizing if one, one of our black teenage sons is murdered, all of our sons are murdered. There is a lot more ideas of interconnectivity that's happening. And, and we have to recognize that these statues came down, you know, BLM, and recognize that, that change, that, that, that call to change that's happening. So hopefully that can be incorporated in that future vision that's happening. So thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Lori, can I just say something? I, um, I, I think the goals that we have are fine. I think that we certainly, as I said, we want voices to be heard, and we want, I think, our new piece to replicate what that may look like. And I think there's lots of ways of doing it. I think about the, and this is just the new piece that's put at the Island Justice Park that the Cranes and others put there, which is great. So I think we could probably come up with the right artwork that would be in front of City Hall. What I, what, what I, um, we are here to find the artwork, to decide where Christopher Columbus statue is going to go, understanding what are our charges. We are absolutely not going to solve all the issues of racism in this, in this meeting, in, in this group. We are not going to, you know, and I don't want, we're not going to solve what happened to, we, we want to tell the truth about everything. That's number one. I think be a truth teller. And truth, you know, everybody has a truth. And again, all the truth is not in the history books, but we need to tell truth. So truth is one, but we got, I think we'd be very focused as to what we are charged to do. Very focused. Because I sit here and I absolutely know that, you know, all of our experiences are different, they're all very different. And what's happened to the indigenous people in this country, we, we're not going to solve that. What's happened to black people, we're not going to solve that. And what's happened to other people. But what we want to do, I mean, because this is a experience too, it's very deep. What we want to do is stay clear with what our focus, what we're asked to do. If these are the goals, how do we do that? How do we do that? So because I think we all could have lots of conversations, lots of conversations are going on within the country. However, if we try to stay close to what our goals are, I think we'll be able to achieve them.
Okay, thank you.
Chairperson Nance, just make a big comment?
Yes.
This, this is more of an attorney's question, I guess. This has been labeled a hearing as opposed to a meeting. And we are, in some ways, directed by the city charter and code, is that correct?
Yes.
So will we be submitting information? Or will we be following the charges presented? So in other words, the letter says that we will discuss the opportunity to display it, meaning the statue elsewhere. Does that mean a final decision has been reached that the statue won't return to where it was displayed?
We may discuss that, and that may be, your recommendations will be taken to the Columbus Art Commission.
Okay.
They may choose to agree to them or not, and to then submit those to the administrative, the administration and to the city.
Okay, thank you. For a full and fair disclosure, I prefer to mention that I sit on the board of the Sisters Cities and the former Chairperson. So I've entertained and hosted mayors of Genoa, Accra, Curitiba, Brazil, from all over the world. And so when you say Jamie, sometimes I think you're talking to me, not Jamie Staley, so we have to. But thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to clarify one thing. The letter that Mr. Sisto, that you were referring to, that came to Diane Nance, as Chair of the Columbus Art Commission, not the Chair of this committee. So this was a charge that was put forth to the Columbus Art Commission. This group is a committee that's been seated by the Columbus Art Commission to address, you know, as we've been talking about, what next for this Christopher Columbus statue? And the quote that I had about the mayor's charge to the Columbus Art Commission regarding the disposition of the statue, working with stakeholders, et cetera. Those are, those are charges that the Art Commission has seated this, this, this committee to look at, to address, to come back with recommendations as to how to proceed with that.
Landa?
And then that.
I am the same person. I am the person who the letter went to as the Chair of the Columbus Art Commission, and I'm chairing this committee, so it's the same person. I know, I'm not sure if you understood that.
Are you talking to me?
Are you talking to me? Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I didn't ask that question.
Okay.
No, I was, I was putting my hand up.
Oh, okay.
To speak next.
All right. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I think that that was a little bit confusing. Well.
Are there other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Landa.
It's pronounced Landa.
Pardon me.
Not a problem, it's spelled that way, and I certainly understand that. A little, just a little bit, I know we don't want to debate this, and I think Ms. Tyson did an excellent job of saying everything. I'm in a unique position, you know, first and foremost, I guess I want to throw out when Christopher Columbus died, and I don't want to debate all of this. I get it, it's a sensitive issue. But as a unique position, I have the Valleydale Ballroom. What I see on a daily basis are individuals from so many countries across this great world, Pakistan, Somali, Hindu, Sri Lankan, Mexican, Italian, whatever, your, your classic Americans, whether they're Caucasian, black, whoever's grown up here in America, in Columbus. And I've asked them this question when they're coming in for their events. So what are your thoughts? Do you have any thoughts on the Christopher Columbus statue? It's an overwhelming, why is it gone? And these are these individuals that are Columbusites, some are immigrants. And I'm saying this not as a fight, but I want to make sure that I understand where we're headed. But before we take those first steps, that the city of Columbus say they have said so many times, if there is a vote taken, they would vote to put it back. And I'm going to the next level that if we put it somewhere on City Hall with others, the idea of one statue, I don't think is ever going to make anyone happy, whether we put Christopher back or if there's another statue. But I'm seeing, as I wrote a letter to you months and months ago, a, several statues representing Columbus. And do I think Christopher should go back? I do. Do you watch the news? They don't post the front of City Hall. It's the side, it's this section, it's that section, it's the skyline. I mean, the beauty that was once Columbus is even in the, the capture of an image is gone. And yes, I understand we have to move ahead, but the idea of the statue there with everything that it represents, the bad, the good, the fantastic, the Italians, that has to be stated somewhere. Maybe it is with Christopher elsewhere, but I guess I'm going to do a plea that why can't it come back with other statues? And please underscore other statues. And, you know, I'm on this commission, and I'm going to work very hard, but I don't want to continue without at least saying that there's going to be verbiage talking about Columbus, the pros and the cons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I, I want to say that, again, I appreciate Councilmember Tyson asking us to focus on our charge. And our charge is from the administration and from the Columbus Art Commission. Our charge is not to change the mayor's disposition. If you want to recommend that, you may, but that is not necessarily our charge. The next, there are, as Lori said, there are several other steps in this entire endeavor. And one of those, probably not for, until we have got the funding and we through the process of getting a new piece, the, you know, we will be engaging artists who will work with us to understand us and to help us envision new art. That new art may not be a statue. So it is very difficult for us to say or imagine that the Christopher Columbus would come back with other statues. So I just wanted to clarify that image. Thank you. Jamie Staley?
Do you have something? I do. I just wanted to say, I think the diversity of this committee, the intention with which we are all here is extraordinarily special. And the perspective that we all bring to the table is, is vital. But from, from my perspective, the thing that's going to make this so impactful for our city is the way in which we, we join together to figure out what the solution is. That we are, we are coming together with ideas and recommendations and perspectives that help to move our city forward, and that we continue to kind of focus on, on that part of our charge. Because I think that this is a unique opportunity to make sure that the comprehensive perspective of all of the members of our community are part of this conversation. And we're, we're lucky enough to be the ones seated around this virtual table. But moving forward, the decisions we make today will be part of Columbus's history just as much as, as the statues that we have. And how do And how do we honor those things the best way that we can while respecting all of the different, you know, perspectives that brought us to this point? So I just want to make sure that we're, we're kind of continuing in that, in that area of focus and connection, not just with a statue and our heritage, but with one another. This is the first time that I've worked with many of you and I look forward to seeing how the ripples of these conversations change things in our community for, for a great deal of time to come.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you. I'm, I'm seeing that we are beyond our time limit. That does not mean that we cannot talk the next time. I haven't heard any other additional goals beyond those that Dan Montour brought up. We can continue to talk about that in our next meeting as well. So Lori, unless you have any other issues that you'd like to say to the commission, I would like to call us to adjournment. And I hope that all of you will continue to be on this committee. I think it's a wonderful conversation. And I do think that we can come to some agreements on or recommendations for the Columbus Art Commission. Lori, is it okay if I?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'll be reaching out to all of you individually just to get some more of your thoughts with regard to the goals and the criteria. As a point for the next meeting, I would like to have something to focus on for the next agenda. Disposition of the statue site requirements. I, Dan, I don't want to discount your, your comments and thoughts with regard to it not being placed somewhere again. I'm, I'm not sure if that's the overall direction that I'm hearing from the full committee. So I guess keeping that in mind, how is the committee comfortable with starting off talking about sort of site requirement criteria? What would be needed if this piece were to be placed somewhere else within the city of Columbus? Is that a good direction? I'm seeing nodding heads. If someone thinks it's not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Kimber and then Kathleen.
I just to, just expand on something I was, didn't communicate clearly enough maybe was when I made reference to, you know, listening to my, my grandchildren and what I heard in addition to, you know, the, the situation that Columbus faces with its police department. But what I also heard was what a flashpoint the statute is. And, and it is to a lot of people. And it's certain, certainly, I think a lot of younger people of all stripes, it is, it is, it is somewhat like what this entire South is dealing with, with these, you know, so-called flags or banners or whatever we are, whatever they are. I mean, it is, it does engender in some people that, a lot of people, especially younger people, that response. I, as a certain generation, I had certainly with my roots being more attentive to the South, I wasn't thinking about it in those terms, but I didn't want to let the meeting end without echoing to some extent. Dan, you're not sitting on an island. I mean, there, yeah, there are people and lots of people that see it as incendiary. But I, I didn't want to say that, that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that's out there. I can see, again, not unlike those banners and flags, what you don't want to do is put something where it is all, it continues to be vandalized and so on and so forth, whatever. But I also, as a person who has, like I said, been such a part of Columbus, visited Hefe and Dresden and been part of Sister Cities to a great extent, that appreciate all of that, but know that this is, this statute, it is, it does have a uniqueness. You know, it, it is not, you know, we can look at those banners and flags in the South and all those statutes too. And we look at those differently. I mean, God, if there was a, you know, Robert E. Lee or whatever. But there, you know, to some people, it is not unlike that. And so I just want to throw that in and also make sure that my, my perspective in terms of Sister City and representing Columbus and so on and so forth is not diminished by that. And, you know, that is, so I just wanted to throw that, that in and, and have that on in everybody's thoughts. And also my, my affection for and connection to the Italian American community in Columbus.
Thank you. Kimber?
Yes, and Kathy and Dan, I appreciate both your perspectives. And I, I'm just wondering, we have multiple charges, as the Art Commission does, and, and we as the committee to support your work. And I'm, I'm thinking about the order of things. It seems to me there's a heavy focus on where the statue is going to go back up ahead of what is going to replace the statue on the City Hall Plaza or plazas around City Hall. And it seems to me if we first focus on that, that that might have, have, help mitigate when we are ready to put the statue back up. Because it seems to me that was, that was a really key point, that we wanted something at City Hall that represented all of our histories, our indigenous people, our African Americans, that, that we had something representative of all of the people. So that, that was one comment I wanted to make. The other comment I wanted to make is the city does a really good job of getting community input. This is a public hearing, of course, but, but, but during normal times, and we've been doing it, of course, virtually over the last year. But we're out in departments like the Development Department that Lori and Nolan are part of, go out into neighborhoods, they're in our community centers, inviting people in to have community conversations around important topics that impact, you know, our residents and our neighborhoods. And City Council is out normally out and about. They kept up their community forums all through COVID. And so I'm also wondering if when we talk next about our goals, can we have a conversation around what kind of community input? We have a wonderful representation here, but what kind of additional, how are we going to hear from the residents of Columbus about this work? And as, as Kathy said, there are lots of opinions on this. So those were the two points I wanted to make, to think about the order of things and to also think about how we're going to engage with our, our residents.
Okay, I hear you. And I see a lot of heads nodding, so I'll work with Lori to switch that order on the agenda so that we are talking about the context first and then the physical requirements. I am personally going to harp on the physical requirements very connected, very serious about making sure that it's safe. So, and, and I know we are thinking about what's to come, but we really need to focus on this statue and the historical content. If you have recommendations for the next committees that will deal with what replaces it at City Hall, great. We'll share that with them, but we are not here to decide what goes next. We're just here to talk about what happens to the Christopher Columbus statue. So if that's okay with everybody, I'll work with Lori. We'll flip those discussions. And next time we meet, we will clarify the historical education, educational and cultural context of what needs to go with this statue. And and then we'll talk about the other parts. I'm very privileged to meet you all and thank you so much for all of your input. I'm buoyed and ready to go and we will see you next month. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.